Mr. Cavallione?
Present.
Mr. Malaney?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Constantine? Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Doyle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mayor Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Pat?
Here. Okay, uh... Let me see. Let's see this report for Kevin Constantine. I can mess it up quick enough myself. Uh, this time, undertake a motion for resolution PB 2309.
Motion to approve PB 2309 for the Terra.
I'll send it in. I have a motion, second roll call, please.
Mr. Cavallione?
Yes.
Mr. Malaney? Mr. Kahoot? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Absolutely.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
I'm saying over here.
Chairman, Pat?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the first application, PB 2311, Vargo Properties.
Good evening. This application concerns a minor site plan application for property located at 2771 Delsey Drive, block 2103, lot 43. The applicant proposes to add a small one-story addition to the rear and side of a portion of the building. I think the total is 173 square feet. And we're here because the property has a lot of pre-existing, non-conforming conditions, and we need to, you know, get variances for those in order to have this site plan approved. The variances requested are for a lot area of 1.2 acres, where 1.5 is required; lot frontage of 120 feet, where 150 is required; side yard parking setback of 3.6 feet, where 10 feet is required. And those are all existing conditions, and variance from having to install siding, sidewalk, excuse me, and curbing at the street frontage, and again, that's not anywhere near us on either side of Delsey Drive, so we're requesting a waiver from having to do that. So I have here the engineer who prepared the site plan, Bill Gilmore from Site Civil Engineering, and he can put up the plan and just give you a quick tour through that. Bill, you may have been qualified as an expert here before, but maybe you could just give a quick...
Sure. My name's William Gilmore. Good evening. My name is William Gilmore, professional engineer. I have a bachelor's from Drexel University in civil engineering. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer. I'm certified municipal engineer. I've testified through various municipalities throughout New Jersey as expert in civil engineering.
If you would remember to have any questions or suggestions, Mr. Gilmore. We're good.
Thank you.
We'll swear a testament about the ability to truth, what the truth is, if you got.
I do.
Is it a good spot for the running? Everybody can see it.
This is a rendered version of the site plan that was included in the package with an aerial underlane underneath it, just to give some context to it. To your view to the plan, north is straight up on the sheet. Delsey Drive is straight up and down on the right side. Rear arch to the rear. It's approximately 1.2 acre. It's currently approved with a two-story office building in the front and a pole barn in the back. A pole barn used for storage of vehicles and supplies used with the surveying operation and curves there. There's also a law office. Access is from Delsey Drive through a big driveway. There are seven parking spaces exist on the south side and four currently on the north side. The proposal is to add a building addition of 173 square feet to the north side, northwest side of the building. To compensate for that increased impervious coverage, they propose to cut off five feet of the parking lot, which is 37 feet long, still give them enough room for three vehicle spaces, so it'll be one less truck vehicle space, and that equals 185 square feet. So the differential will lessen pervious coverage at the end than when we start. There was a comment in the review letter, if I could address, the location of downspouts, the downspouts will be extended from the existing building on the west side of the building. They'll splash blocks and drain in an orderly direction towards lot 42 simultaneously towards Delsey Drive. It's sheet flow pattern on northeast angle. Their lawn is in great condition. It's manicured, so that's going to absorb any additional, well, it'll be no additional, but that'll absorb and create sheet flow along this whole area as it's discharging from the roof, so I don't see any issues with drainage or anything like that, or, you know, increasing anything. It'll be less runoff, maintain the same patterns. There's some minor utilities that are located on the north side of the building that will be relocated approximately five feet to facilitate for the proposed addition. So very simple application, very simple plan, very minor change to what goes on today.
Anyone have any questions for the engineer before I call the applicant up? Okay. Thank you, Bill. I'm calling up Mike Vargo. He is one of the two members of the LLC that owns the property. Will you please raise your hand, get sworn in?
Swear a testimony about the ability to truth, what the truth is, if you got.
I do. Thank you.
Mr. Vargo, as part of the review letter, some issues came up, some questions that the board would like to have answered. Can you please explain what's the intended use of this small addition?
It's a building that was built like in 1910, you know, 1910, 1914. There's really no closet space in the building, and for the last 20 years, we've been just dealing with putting our equipment cases in a rear room, and it's just becoming cumbersome. The guys are walking around the equipment boxes, and we're just afraid that somebody's going to trip and, you know, hurt themselves or break the equipment. So we wanted to minimize the amount of addition that we're putting on, so we figured out what's the minimum that we need, and a five-foot, you know, expanding that room by five feet on two sides will give us the storage capacity for these equipment cases, and that's the extent of...
And a question came up about the exterior design, having it sort of match the existing architectural features or treatments on the outside, so...
Yeah, the colors and the siding are going to match the existing building.
And there was also a question about the top floor of the building. Can you explain what's up top?
It's an attic that contains our heating ventilation system. It's a two-zone building, so the downstairs is cooled by something in the basement, and the upstairs is cooled and heated by the attic. There's just enough room to stand up in the middle, and that's where the HVAC system is. And then it's got like a hip-style roof, so as it tapers toward where the windows are, you know, the dormers that you see from the outside, it's maybe four and a half feet tall.
And we also discussed, are there going to be any other exterior improvements that are going to be necessary as a result of putting that little addition on?
On the north side, there's a window, and it's about four, five inches lower than where the new hip roof's going to tie into it, so the builder's going to remove that window and put in a slightly smaller window, so that there's not going to be any, you know, potential leaking from where the hip roof ties into the existing wall.
Was that going to be on the west side or the north side?
North side.
Okay. And the roof leader drain discharge location, the engineer addressed that. I think that's it.
Any questions? The smooth origin here. Is the applicant satisfied with the concerns, and is there anything else on your report that you want to address?
No, our main concern at this time was the stormwater runoff, making sure that it's not being negatively impacted, which Mr. Gilmore addressed, and the downspouts are simply going to be extended from existence, so at this time, no.
No, no concerns. There are three variances and two waivers, I think it is. They're all existing conditions and aren't being impacted. I mean, frankly, they're adding less than 200 square feet of building onto a lot that's, what is it, a little over an acre and is 40 or 50 feet away from the nearest adjacent properties, so this is going to have minimal impact depending on anything here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? I think there was probably... I'm making a little... Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This time, we're in public portion on this application. If anyone wishes to come forward. Move to close for...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There was only one piece, Mike, that I did a very similar application, and I did exactly what you did in calling it a storage space, which was the original intent, and then I realized that I wanted to move people into it. So the applicant is, the application would be for an addition to the building, but you're not the... I would hate to see you tie your hands and have to come back because it was for storage only when you wanted to move somebody's desk in there. So is the application for an addition to the building, or is it exclusively for storage and you'll never be able to put a desk in there?
As we describe it, it's, you know, 30, 40 years ago, it was a kitchen. So right now, it's just one large open room. So what we're doing is we're taking the north side, moving that wall back five feet, taking the west side, slide that back five feet. It's all open. So against the one wall, we're just, we're going to have some shelving units so these equipment cases can get off the floor whenever they put in there. It's just like it may...
You understand what I'm going to go?
Absolutely.
I tied my hands, you know, in story generally. And when determined I wanted to use it for something else, I actually have to back to the board and get the change made.
Well, you know, there may be some occupancy of the new area because a bathroom is being moved.
Thank you, Cal. Okay. With that said, is there any questions or a motion? I'll make the motion, please. PB 311 with all the... I have a motion, second roll call, please.
Mr. Cavallione?
Yes.
Mr. Malaney?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Chairman, Pat?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next application. Next application, PB 2312, Kevin. I can mess up using one. All right.
Good evening. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if I need to be qualified and sworn in. My name is James Sisano. I'm the owner of James Sisano Associates. We're an engineering and land surveying firm in Hamilton, New Jersey. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of New Jersey since 1990, and a licensed planner, and I'm representing the applicant for this minor subdivision.
An individual or is it a corporation?
Individual.
Okay.
He's actually not representing him, doesn't want to say he's representing him.
I apologize.
That's what I was going with that. So you're back to your applicant should reduce you as their witness, and that way you can proceed, but they should actually reduce you as their witness.
If you want.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Never done this before.
All right. We'll testify, we'll testify also. I see the idea.
If there is questions, yeah.
Okay. So we have both of you raise your ideas. Swear a testimony about the ability to truth, what the truth is, if you got.
I do. Thank you. Hi.
The easy part, the reason for the question, an individual can represent himself.
Okay.
If it was a corporation, I don't see they need to be represented by the attorney. When an engineer came up and said that, it was like, okay, what are we doing?
Yes, sorry. Pardon us for that.
Without a license, they're in trouble. We don't want that.
Now, all these years, 40 years of doing this, the first time anyone's ever... It's a good point, though. It's a good point you brought up.
Okay. So explain us what's going on.
Okay. So Mr. Pedlinski is...
Yeah, now.
I was practicing when he came up.
Yes.
He is under agreement to purchase at lot 19, block 301.07. It's a 5.2 acre vacant parcel of land at the end of Catherine Court. He and his fiancee...
Yes.
Would like to build their forever house here in Franklin Township, and we're here seeking a... It turned, it evolved into a minor subdivision. It started out, it was just going to be a variance for lot frontage. However, the current owner of the lot, who is selling the lot to the applicant, would like to retain approximately a little over 1.3 acres of ground and keep it, convey it to their property where they currently reside on Lakeview Avenue. In doing the boundary survey for the minor subdivision and the variance, it was discovered that there is an existing accessory building over the property line that encroaches onto this lot. So part of this minor subdivision will be conveying a portion of land, 4,885 square feet, to lot eight in the same block. In return, they're going to convey back a very small portion of land to assist with the lot frontage for the applicant, and it will also resolve the encroachment of the accessory building over the line. The subdivision, we're not proposing any new building lots, and the only proposed development we are providing here is for a single-family dwelling on the, what will result in a 3.8 acre parcel. They're going to convey 1.3 acres to the current lot owners over on Lakeview, and they're going to convey 4,800 square feet of ground to lot eight, and they'll result in a net of 3.8 acres on their property. The minimum lot frontage is 150 feet, and we only have 110. We're seeking a variance for that. We were able to increase it to 110 by acquiring that piece of land off of lot eight. Any other variances that are noted in the review letter are pre-existing, non-conforming. And the setback variance for lot eight, I believe, was not a variance situation when that subdivision was created. The filed plats that we have for that subdivision, it was a 50-foot setback, where now it's a 75-foot setback. So that's what's creating that non-conforming, pre-existing setback. Other than that, we're, if asked, we're willing to provide why we feel this would benefit the community and not be detrimental. However, that's basically what we're asking for here tonight.
Scotty, engineers, please.
From an engineering standpoint, there's not much to comment on at this time, unless Chris says anything you'd like to add.
Well, I'm not the engineer. I can't speak to engineering stuff, but I can talk to the few planning things. There are a few bulk variances required, like the previous application. They're all existing, non-conforming conditions. The one that they're talking about, lot frontage, they're taking the existing lot, which is already non-conforming. They're actually making it closer to conforming, but still not quite getting the full 150. Everything else is not being impacted by this application. The only thing I would note, on your subdivision plans, you had noted that you essentially guessed the minimum side yard setback requirement for an accessory building.
For the accessory, yes.
It's actually 10 feet is all that's required. I don't know if that changes what you're proposing.
I spoke to the applicant before the meeting about that, and we'd still like to provide 20 feet, just to give that much more of a buffer off the property.
Nothing wrong with that. I just didn't know if the 20 feet was specifically what they're going to use, that wanted to come in as close to variance free as possible. But if you want to stick with 20, that's what's on the plans. That's easy enough. That's double what's required, so it's more than conforming. Same thing, there's design waivers required for lack of sidewalks and lack of curbing. Those are also existing conditions. Yeah, that's it. This is another one that, aside from a few existing conditions, is essentially a by-right subdivision. Actually, I should change that. It's not really a subdivision, it's a lot line adjustment. No new lots are being created here.
Thanks, Chris. Is there a question? Okay. Is this proposed civil family that...
Correct.
I'm having a hard time finding this shit that you're referring to.
I think it's identified as a pool house on the plans.
Pool?
Yeah, it exists in the pool house.
Over...
Right over in this part of the property.
All right, okay. I was looking up on the Lakeview Avenue site. Okay, got it. Okay, this time, we'll entertain a motion to open public portion.
Motion to open the public portion.
Move the second all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in public portion on this application, if there's any questions.
Yeah, I have questions.
Yep?
My name's Joe Flood. I live on Dawn Drive. We have five acres, and that backs up to Lakeview, and I'd like to see what's going to go on.
Yes.
Rather than be in the dark.
You're back here?
Right here.
Okay.
There we are.
Yeah, so basically, we're proposing a single-family dwelling right here in the center of this lot. It'll be roughly 225 feet off this property line, plus another 200, so it'd be about 425 feet off the common line where you reside.
And where the power lines is.
Power lines come right through here.
Right here, yes.
Right through the door.
So it's definitely going to be all on that side.
And this is being transferred to the original. Yeah, this piece here will be conveyed to the current owner here. Because it's under the power lines, there won't be any development.
Right, there won't be anything under there at all.
There'll be no roads going through here or anything like that.
And then we do not plan to disturb any of the park street.
Doing this will actually prevent a road from ever going through to that other stuff street in there. Because our house is up here, and then we have like, we're on one acre, and then we have about four acres, which is all good wood.
Yeah.
So this will all remain wood except for here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else with questions? Every now and then, take motion to close public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Move the second all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Board, anyone from the board have questions? All right.
No, I make a, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll say, I have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Cavallione?
Yes.
Mr. Malaney?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Chairman, Pat?
Yes. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I do have one question. I think it was on the planner's comment, the buffer. Do you need a buffer added to that?
If that is indeed farmland to the north, then you...
To the plan, okay.
Fifty-foot buffer, yes.
All right. So we'll prepare and submit legal descriptions and make any applicable revisions to the plan, and resubmit everything for final review. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the application, are you okay with what just happened there? Yes. Okay, all right. All right, please. Okay. Correspondence.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No? This time, I undertake a motion to approve the minutes of 9:19:23.
Motion to approve minutes of 9:19:23.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to approve minutes of October 17th, 2023.
Motion to approve minutes of October 17th, 23.
You were there, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
And I got a couple of extensions, right? All right. This time, I undertake a motion to open the general public portion.
I'm making a motion, bud.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're in public portion, if anyone wishes to come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Pash. Gilmore, Silk Avenue. Just a question out of curiosity. There was no meeting in October. There wasn't a farm. How'd you have minutes?
It just says that there again.
No, but you guys voted to approve.
Memorializing, memorializing the fact that there was no meeting.
Okay. No problem, thank you.
You are correct. There wasn't a meeting. It's more documenting the fact that there was no meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Housekeeping piece, there you go. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I wanted to ask about...
Name and address of the work, just please.
Wesley Sohail, 194 Sandra Way. S.O.H.A.I.L. Okay, I got a notice about a farm on, off of Fry's Mill, that between Washington and Grant, that was seeking to get approval for zoning for a solar farm.
Okay.
Was that still scheduled for tonight, or is that...
And I'm going to let the solicitor, so we get the answer correctly to the public. I'm going to let the solicitor answer the question for you.
Yeah, I didn't realize they'd give a notice. Yeah, they requested a 90-day postponement. So at this point, they would not be here until February, but they will give notice again, so you don't have to keep coming back and check. You should give notice again before they come in. They're indicating they intend to come in in February, but whenever the notice is, that's been a little bit...
Okay. Thank you all.
All right, you're welcome, sorry.
Dave Marshall, 67, New Root. Just a couple of questions. Are we, how are we producing or proceeding, I should say, with the master plan? We have, nobody's heard anything about any meetings, so I'm just curious.
The committee has been appointed and hasn't made yet.
Okay. And all those meetings will be public?
I've asked both the township solicitor and the town board solicitor to give me their input, and quite honestly, although my colleagues here had made a statement, I don't know if I necessarily agree with it. In negotiations, I don't know if it is appropriate to have that type of information out on Facebook that if I say we should do away with all the farms in Franklin Township, and somebody else says every piece of the township should be a farm, that'll be out there, placed on the public media as that's what we're doing. So in negotiations, as if it was a police contract or any other contract, that's not going public. Once the draft is put together and then discussed with the entire board, that will certainly be in public. So I think the answer, and it's going to be driven by the attorneys, I think the answer is the workshop will not be in public, but the discussion...
is the workshop will not be in public, but the discussion with the board will absolutely be in public.
Okay, at least, and of course, you'll be able to verify this as the attorney, but from what I can glean, at least from the master plans throughout the state, all of them fall under the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act and the Certified Local Government Guidelines, which means they all have to be public if there's a quorum met.
Again, my answer was, whatever the attorney says is correct. I gave you my personal opinion because I don't feel that in, when you're having a discussion about where should we be, I don't feel that 15 minutes later, that should be on Facebook.
I understand that. I'm just expressing the way...
I would yield absolutely what the attorney says.
Any subcommittee does not have to be a public open meeting, but any action to adopt the plan has to be done at a properly known as public.
Exactly. We don't even need the user committees, we can hire planners.
The only thing that's required by law is that the master plan or reexamination report is adopted by a planning board at a public meeting.
And all that, absolutely.
And that all has to fall under all of the sunshine laws, all of that.
Yeah, the way the law is written is that any commission, which is commissioned as a group of people officially charged with a particular function, master plan falls under that category, they have to meet under the Open Public Meeting Act. That's state law.
The planning board, as they adopt the master plan, yes, the, a subcommittee working to develop a draft is not a full commission that has any authority to adopt anything. They're preparing a draft that will then get reviewed and revised as necessary, depending on what this board feels about whatever draft that the subcommittee comes up with.
Okay, I'm sure it'll be reviewed and we'll see if it falls in the correct area here.
It has to be posted with the township clerk at least, at least 10 days prior to any meeting and then so all of the, it's going to be a repeat, entire thing and they go over comments as necessary as well.
Sounds good. I know some of the members are here that are on that board, just do your best to do the best you can for the township. This is a chance to polish this up, you know, from an older state plan and just don't be anybody's puppet. Thank you.
Mr. Brand, how are you, sir?
Good. Jason Brand, 688 Rosemont Avenue, Newfield, New Jersey. I just had a quick question, so if the board could clarify for me. When the planning board approves an individual application, once that approval is completed, the applicant doesn't need to proceed to any other municipal boards to develop their site in accordance with the planning board approval, do they?
Not to my, I don't know where you're going with the question, not to my knowledge.
Well, I can give you a...
The resolution needs to be approved.
I can give you a more specific example. Cut a fire?
Yeah, it's our guy. He's going on that.
Okay. If an applicant were to come in with a subdivision and let's say, for example, they owned a five-acre parcel of property and they wanted to subdivide their property to sell off either portion or have a family member develop another portion for him, and this board granted the subdivision, subject to conditions, one of them being a reduction in frontage for the subdivided lot. In other words, like a flag lot, like this board has done in the past. Once this board approves that subdivision and that deficiency, that individual, when it comes time for them to develop that property, doesn't need to then go to another board and ask relief from a zoning board for a frontage.
If it was on a county road and lived in front of the county...
Yeah, water parties have jurisdiction to state or the state, the county, pie lands, not to another township board, the resolution...
Generally, they would just go, be able to go to the construction department and get building permits.
And get a permit, the way I always understood.
If they're either officially have a zoning board or a planning board based upon the relief, so that relief will be granted. If they needed some other relief afterward, then they could have to go to one or the other board.
If there's any conditions of approval that say they're going to revise the plan to change the frontage from 50 to 100, or they're going to add, you know, add landscape buffering somewhere, that's a specific condition of approval, it'll be our office that would review that and could administratively approve that condition as opposed to them coming back before the board having to show those plans again.
Okay. But once that variance for frontage is granted, you don't have to go get another variance in order to develop the property.
Unless you're changing the plan, you'd have to get amended variance.
Unless you're putting something on that lot that isn't allowed, it would be a zoning...
But once you file that subdivision, essentially, you're effectuating that ordinance and, or that variance and it's...
It's a valid lot.
It's a valid lot at that point, so...
I've been under the impression that a variance would run with the land, so once you get the variance, it's good for, I guess it's earned. I don't, that would be a question for Mike.
Yeah. If that's granted, it's a valid lot.
The dimensions, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Motion to close open public portion.
Move, is there a second?
Yes.
Move the second law in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Michael, no need for a close?
No, I do not have any.
Okay. Time I entertain, well, first of all, I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy yourself with your family. And at this time, I'll entertain the motion, do a juror.
Make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Move the second law in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.